We will now move to Cascadia Subduction Zone Work Session. Gentlemen, I apologize, we're almost half an hour behind schedule. So let's get rolling.
Okay. Let's see, how does this work? Okay. Very good. Well, thank you for inviting me. I'll talk a little bit about the science behind the earthquakes in the Cascadia Subduction Zone. I'll try to keep this to 10 minutes. I'll try to make two points. Basically, what do we know? Basically, we know these earthquakes quite well, how often they come and the shaking we expect. And I'll also point out earthquake early warning is a very useful tool in the case of one of these terrifying earthquakes. For background, we're here at the junction of the North American Plate and the Wanda Fuka Plate. It's this plate collision that powers the earthquakes. We're talking about the Cascadia Subduction Earthquake today, but there are three kinds of earthquakes that threaten us, and we need to remember all three when we're making our earthquake planning. One is these Cascadia Subduction earthquakes. They break the ground along the plate boundary, all the way from Canada down into California, move the ground about 20 or 30 meters. But there are also earthquakes in the crust, like the Seattle Fault, the Olympia Fault, the South Woodby Island Fault, that create more intense shaking locally. There's also deep earthquakes, like the Nisqually Earthquake in 2001, that happen every few decades. It's happened three times the last 100 years, and they cause billions of dollars of damage as well. So we have to remember all three kinds of earthquakes overall. You all know we're the kind of second most, second highest earthquake risk in the country, behind only California. We have an estimated half a billion dollars a year in losses in the long term, some conservative ways of measuring it. We know how often we have earthquakes, because we can see a 10,000-year history of earthquakes in the geology. And we have a good idea what kind of shaking and damage to expect, partly because we can calculate it and partly because we can compare what we expect with what we've seen in Japan and in Chile in the last few years. I won't go into detail, but in the geology, for example, Brian Atwater at the University of Washington and the USGS has looked at the layering and seen how the coast sank and then slowly rebounded many times in the past few thousand years to get one idea of what earthquakes we expect. Chris Goldfinger at Oregon State University has also looked at the landslides and the canyons offshore, and he can look at the layering and see a 10,000-year history. And this timeline shows with the heavy lines, the last 20 times we've had a magnitude nine earthquake on the coast, every 500 years. And the lighter lines are magnitude eight and eight and a half earthquakes, also great earthquakes, bigger than anything they expect in California, about every 500 years as well. So we can look at these histories and realize that we're into the window to where we expect the next earthquake. It's actually about a 50% higher chance now than the long-term average. That works out to about 10 to 20% chance per 50 years, for the nine, and 25 to 40% chance for 50 years of the magnitude eight plus. So we know how they occur. To figure out the shaking, we make very complicated models. I'll just spend a minute or two on. We make a geologic model of the Pacific Northwest. It includes the difference between the oceans and the continent, continental rocks. It includes the deep soft basins under the Puget Sound and the Twalton Basin near Portland and up in Canada as well, that particularly amplify the motion. We put these runs on a supercomputer, and they take a week apiece. They're very expensive, but it's something that we have to do. We make models of the ground breakage itself. Again, I could talk for hours, but you don't want to hear it. But when we model the earthquakes, it's important that we put a set of sharp pops in. It's really four or so magnitude eight earthquakes that generate most of the shaking that causes the damage, and the background smoother shaking doesn't, causes much damage. So we make these models, and we're running 50 of them now, you know, a week apiece, on the Hanford supercomputer to make sure we know the shaking. And this is an example of rupture. It'll start here, and the point here is to show you how the rupture progresses. It takes about five minutes for one of these earthquakes to happen. It'll start right here, and you'll see the crack going both ways along the fault. If it works, yeah, there it goes. So the earthquake starts, you can see the crack running up the fault and down the fault till it runs out of steam at Cape Mendocino. It'll keep going up to Vancouver Island. You can see the vibrations it's setting off. You can also see the waves heading toward the Puget Sound, and as they hit that soft basin, they grow in amplitude and amplify and cause particular damage. So that's what we do 50 times with different geometries and details of rupture and so forth. And I don't want to, this plot is too complicated, but all it really shows is what we're seeing is we're finding what we expected, what we saw from other earthquakes. And in particular, we're seeing greater amplification in the Puget Sound than we expected at long period, which is the frequency that affects tall buildings and the big bridges. The engineers are going to have to deal with that when we report, and they're seeing similar things in Los Angeles and San Francisco. It's just kind of the direction the science is going. But generally, the point here is we know what shaking to expect. Early warning is a tool we're developing with the Seismic Network and to illustrate what happens with an earthquake. It generates fast but weak P waves and slower S waves that cause the damage, about half as fast. During an earthquake, the waves spread out and our instruments, particularly the ones near the fault, notice the small waves going by, and from that, they can tell what strong waves are coming next. And we can get anywhere from one to five minutes of warning of the strong shaking in the case of a great Cascadia earthquake. As the waves travel outward, they reach the more instruments, we get a better idea, and eventually, the damaging waves come to the city, and people have had a little bit of time to prepare. There's a lot you can do with a few minutes of warning. Obviously, you can't fix everything. You can only fix a fraction of the problems, but you can slow down traffic of cars and trains and airplanes, not be running into landslides with the trains. Hospitals and other emergency operations can start their coordination of efforts, fire up their emergency generators, stop operations. Also, companies can batten down their delicate equipment. Computer companies can back off whatever transactions they're doing, so they know how to restart when things return to normalcy. Also, a lot of other countries are building these systems. Japan's had a sophisticated early warning system for a decade. China's building one that's far greater than what we're attempting to. We like to tell legislators Mongolia is building it, so we think the U.S. ought to be able to build one. The physics is simple. It's just a matter of getting the messages and spreading them out and using them quickly. Okay? And just the status is that we have an implementation plan developed by the USGS. It's about 16 million a year for the whole West Coast. That breaks down to 2/3 for the Pacific Northwest, 2/3 for California, 1/3 for the Pacific Northwest in proportion to the risk. 2/3 of the Pacific Northwest is Washington, 1/3 is Oregon, where we have half of the funding, which makes sense. It takes time to build up this network. We think we're on a good trajectory if it continues toward the full system. But it's also important to note the state collaborates, in particular the EMD, as well as people in towns, need to have resources to connect the alerts with the people who are going to use them. We generate the alert at the Seismic Network, but that doesn't take it all the way to the people on the coast worried about tsunamis, or the people in their houses, and working with companies takes some liaison too. So I think that's basically it. You know, we know a lot about these earthquakes. We've seen many of them in the past. We have a good idea what shaking to expect. It's serious. Puget Sound might be a worse problem than we thought. Early warning can give a couple of minutes to prepare. And these shaking estimates form the basis of the scenarios you'll hear from the people that follow. Okay, I'm done.
Senator Carlo. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Super quick question. In December, at the end of December, the Seattle Times did a front-page expose regarding earthquake insurance, and they talked about how the Office of Insurance Commissioner doesn't have the resources to do any modeling. The primary provider in our state is State Farm. Allstate pulled out a number of years ago. California requires mandatory insurance. Washington does not. Just curious if either the Office of Insurance Commissioner or any other public agency has been able to, you know, that they partner with you, that utilize their data, and that they incorporate that, are able to incorporate that in any of their regulatory views and any insights you might have on earthquake insurance from this.
Yeah, and earthquake insurance is a difficult problem, and we're not particularly specialists in that. And they do have access to, you know, the USGS estimates of the impact of earthquakes. So they have the latest cutting-edge estimates of the probability of shaking and damage. But I, it's a very difficult problem about requiring insurance, and it's actually out of my expertise, so I probably shouldn't comment further.
One quick question. Do you have the EEGW potential? Is there anything in operation in Washington now?
Yeah, it's on my phone. You know, we're experimenting with it, but for one thing, it's not reliable enough and accurate enough to give out to the public, and also, we're sort of waiting till the system is more fully built out. And we're trying to do this in a synchronized way up and down the coast. But the real problem is right now, the app on my phone works, and it'll work up to about 1,000 users, but scaling it up to 10 million users is impossible, and we're trying to work with people who generate emergency warnings to figure out how we can make a more widespread distribution that gets there within the second or two that we really need it for things like the close faults like the Seattle Fault. A lot of this needs to be very rapid, and that's difficult. Does that answer your question?
Yes. Thank you. Any other questions? Oh, yes. Senator Zager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Are there any kind of advance warnings in terms of other earthquakes, smaller earthquakes that may happen in advance, other ways that you can tell that something big might be coming?
That's a complicated question. Basically, there's very little information about the big earthquakes. We can, we're developing operational earthquake forecasting, which essentially means if there is a magnitude six earthquake, we can say what the chance is of a bigger earthquake in the next day or two, but usually, those odds are very low, like 2% or 5%. It's not clear what you do with a 2% chance of a big earthquake in the next day or two or week. So the odds are very low. I mean, we just, it's rare that there, anyone can say there's a probability, high probability of an earthquake soon. It's only once the earthquake's started, and then it's inevitable that the shaking will be coming.
I wish I was in college and could take some classes from you.
Yeah, well, it's fun developing a system that has a lot of use. Yeah.
Okay. Colonel Braun, or is there a panel here, I guess, I don't know who goes first. And I'd like to welcome former Representative Jim Buck. Served with him in the House a couple of years ago.
Chair Honeyford and members of the committee, thanks. I'm Lieutenant Colonel Clay Braun with the Washington National Guard. I've been planning this earthquake response stuff here for a little bit, so I'm going to go through this very quick in the interest of time. Now, Mr. Vidal's information, his efforts are a little bit newer than some of the efforts we based our planning on. FEMA commissioned a study from a federal agency called HighTrack, the Homeland Infrastructure Threat and Risk Analysis Center, a number of years ago, and their output is the basis or the assumptions from which all of our planning has taken place. So what I'm going to be briefing you here in just a moment is the output from the HighTrack study, which basically modeled, did some computer modeling of a magnitude nine earthquake here on the Cascadia Subduction Zone Fault. The study was commissioned about 2007. It was completed in about 2011. It was published in 2013, and so that's, if you haven't heard of it before, that might be part of the reason. All right, these are some of the assumptions and modeling factors that went into the model. When we talk about these major earthquakes, there's really four major effects that we're concerned with. The first one is, of course, the intensity of the shaking. That's what we're all familiar with, with earthquakes. So when we talk about a magnitude nine earthquake, it's important to realize that's at the fault line. The farther you get away from the fault, the more decreased the intensity of that shaking is. But as Mr. Vitale just briefed, the duration of the shaking doesn't dissipate. You still have a five-minute or so shake. And so in the case of the HighTrack study, the shaking in the metropolitan area of Seattle was still something in excess of a magnitude seven, but for five minutes or more. And so if you go back to 2001, we were looking at a 6.8 magnitude earthquake that shook for 35 to 40 seconds, and it caused a little over $2 billion worth of damage in the I-5 corridor. Something on the magnitude of the Cascadia Subduction Zone, the preliminary estimates are in excess of $200 billion worth of damage caused by this thing. So it's pretty significant. The next big thing we look at, of course, is liquefaction. Liquefaction, by definition, is where the water content in the soil, when shaken, reduces the soil's ability to bear load. Think of that in layman's terms as quicksand. You shake it up, and it can no longer support the weight that's on it. So the good news about liquefaction is because of that definition, we can identify pretty much where it's going to happen today. The bad news about liquefaction is that we tend to put a lot of very critical infrastructure in liquefactable areas. For example, all of our ports, a lot of our bridges, our major highways, all tend to be in liquefactable areas. So when you see photographic evidence of an earthquake, a lot of times, the most engaging photos are from liquefactable areas. When you see a building that has literally fallen over on its side, or a car that's submerged in the middle of a road and then re-solidified, it's because those areas were liquefactable. Our next major concern for these are landslides. So of course, we're all familiar with the SR530 landslide. On the scale of a CSZ, that's a relatively small landslide. It was about one square mile of dirt that moved about one linear mile. And of course, as you know, it severed State Route 530. It took us six weeks to get one lane reestablished on that state route. It took us six months to reestablish both lanes, and that was one small, small landslide. In the case of the Cascadia, we're looking at dozens, if not hundreds, of similar events around Western Washington. So pretty significant. And then last, but certainly not least, are the tsunamis. So tsunamis historically are the major killer associated with these types of earthquakes. If you look at Sumatra in 2004, almost a quarter of a million people were killed by that tsunami. Even Japan, arguably one of the most prepared nations on the planet for this event, in their 2011 Great East Japan earthquake, they lost 16,000 people primarily to that tsunami. So tsunamis are a huge killer. And here in the state of Washington today, we have about 50,000 residents, permanent residents, in tsunami areas, or tsunami inundation zones. So those are the major effects. The rest of these slides I'm going to go through very, very quickly in the interest of time. Just some photographic evidence of some of the shaking. Interesting to note, of course, is that the initial shake isn't necessarily the biggest killer for these things. Christchurch, New Zealand, the majority of the fatalities happened in the aftershocks. Just something to be aware of. After a building's compromised, you don't re-enter it. Here's some of the liquefaction photos. There's the car submerged in the middle of the street. You see the building that has literally fallen over. That sewer manhole used to be at grade, but when basically a tube full of air is surrounded by liquefactable terrain, it begins to float. So it floated up, and then it re-solidified, and now it's several feet above grade. Here's some of the tsunami stuff. You see a gigantic catamaran on top of a multi-story building. And then, of course, the picture on the right is actually a tsunami barrier there in Sendai Bay, and the tsunami overstepped that barrier. Japan's only problem there was they didn't believe that that fault line was going to rupture at the magnitude it did. So because of the excess energy, their tsunami barrier was not at all prepared for that. Here in the United States, of course, we have zero tsunami barriers. So in Japan, at least, that absorbs some of that energy. Here are our inundation zones in the state of Washington. These next several slides I'm going to go through very, very quickly, but you'll get the gist. The red is bad.
Can you go back one slide? We have--
Yes, sir. Right. So primarily, the low-lying areas or any interface with estuaries tend to be your tsunami areas.
Senator Blosch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just curious, are those population figures include tourism in the summer, where population goes way up?
Those population numbers are not necessarily the people who are resident in that tsunami area, but they're people who are, one way or another, endangered. You'd have to go back to the HighTrack study to get more data on that specific slide.
So you're not sure if it includes the tourists?
I don't think it does. If, you know, Long Beach on the Fourth of July could be, you know, 100,000 people, so, Roger.
Senator Conway has a question.
I'm curious what rising sea levels have as an impact on this. It seems like with rising sea levels, we're really getting into a situation where we're actually increasing our potential for damage here.
Quite honestly, Senator, that's beyond my area of expertise. I've spent three and a half years studying the earthquake and tsunami data. Rising sea level seems gradual enough that, I don't know that it would affect the math, quite honestly. But did that answer your question adequately?
It just seems like we get winds blowing in water these days. Heavy winds come in and wipe out a large part of our--
Yes, sir. Our winter storm weather can be pretty damaging on the coast.
Right. It seems to me that's increasing the risk here, as, to me. I mean, I just--
Yes, I think on the magnitude, the order of magnitude, that's pretty small stuff. And we didn't even talk about subsidence, where the ground actually drops six to 15 feet on the coast, making it that much more susceptible to the tsunami. And so it's bad. I'm coming back to this slide to, in the order of time. You'll understand the slides. The red is bad, and green is less bad. The bottom line here is that on this slide, it talks about a total reduction in capacity of 45%. It's important to realize that these slides are talking about structural capacity only. This slide is telling us that 45% of our hospitals will be gone, but it's not talking about the ability to handle patients, because you're still talking about an environment that has no power, no potable water, no sanitation, the traffic infrastructure is damaged, so the actual ability to handle patients is something significantly less. And fire stations here, it says 1/3 of our capacity, but again, that's structural. And then you have to remember that a lot of those coastal fire departments are volunteer fire departments and may not be manned at all at this point. Police stations here, 50% of our law enforcement capacity throughout Western Washington. Transportation, Air, Steam, Rail, the bottom line here is there's no surviving lines of communication initially. We have to forge them to bring commodity into Western Washington. Here's a map of the highway system or the road system in Western Washington. The real takeaway here is that there's no surviving ground routes to the coast, and even in the metropolitan areas, it's so damaged that the transportation becomes very difficult. When you combine that with the loss or impact to bridges here, you see 7,000 bridges in the state of Washington. The bottom line is you end up with what we'll call micro islands of trafficability, and I think Mr. Buck will talk a little more about those. And then last, but not least, for my slides here, the planning factors. These come straight out of the FEMA study, the HighTrack study that was published in December of '13. When you look at some of these numbers, they're really astounding. You see there about 85,000 combined total evacuees, medical evacuees between nursing homes and hospitals, and you see about 1 and 1/4 million people that need mass feeding and hydration. And that's talking about immediately after the first shake and the first wave of the tsunami. As time goes by, those numbers get significantly worse. With that, I'm going to go ahead and hand it off to Mr. Buck. Thank you, Colonel Braun, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can we get to your slides?
Uh, let's see. Let's make sure we get to my slides. Here we go. While we're getting that up, I'd like to apologize. I should have had you people on first, so all those people could have seen this.
I was hoping you were going to say that, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Because it does have a bearing on the conversations that you had with them. For the record, my name is Jim Buck. I used to hang out down here for a while. I wanted to go ahead, and there was some controversy about whether I was going to steal Colonel Braun's thunder or vice versa, and I wanted to go ahead and let you know, this program has been put together for the people of Clallum County. And I'm presenting it to you right now because I want you specifically to see what my county's up against, and then we're going to talk about what your county and your district is up against. So Clallum County is right up here. Automatically, as soon as the earthquake happens, we lose three out of four police stations. We probably lose the county jail. And we have 840 high-security corrections prisoners at Clallum Bay Correction Center that will be unable to be accessed at least by air and possibly by water for up to eight days. They have two days' worth of food on hand. They have the shift that's working there that will not be able to be reinforced, and they have a Department of Corrections that will not tell their guards what their plan for response is. Also, we have a significant situation with firefighting. Most of our firehouses are going to fall, and our fire trucks and ambulances. So it's going to be two or three days before we can dig the stuff out that we need to be able to respond to the emergencies in our community. This says that probably our limited firefighting capacity will only be used for critical infrastructure like fuel or hospitals, or to go ahead and stop a community-wide conflagration. We will have a great deal of problems with this because we expect all the water mains and water systems in the county to be destroyed, so firefighting will be relatively rare. As far as the highways are concerned, as I mentioned before about the Clallum Bay Correction Center that hangs out right up in here, there will be no access to it from the population centers where most of the corrections guards live and commute to work. So this is a considerable situation the Washington National Guard is looking at in their contingency planning. You can see there are no surviving coastal or roads to the coast. This will come to play later when we talk about economic impacts, because people like to come to the coast and leave money with us as part of their tourism industry, but we'll get back to that. We also have 104 bridges in the county and about 80 reinforced fills over culverts. We expect to lose all of them. Communications will be limited to line-of-sight communications using police cars. It is called simplex communication systems and ham radios for at least two weeks until we can get people back in there that will help us restore our communication facilities. As far as our schools concerned, we don't expect any of our schools in the county to survive, and this is something you, as a committee, will have to take into account when you talk about seismic retrofit. This is really a problem for us. We have the capability of putting together two heavy rescue teams to address somewhere in the neighborhood of just in Clallum, or in Port Angeles, seven schools. If five of those schools collapse, three of them are going to have to be on the, at the end of somebody's list while our teams are trying to get the kids out of the two that we can access. So this is something that we really are concerned about, but we get hit twice when we have schools come down. These schools are all part of the natural, or national sheltering system. And when those schools go down, we're not going to be able to use them as shelters. We have 72,000 people in the county. We figure we're going to have to shelter somewhere around 12,000. We barely have shelter capacity for that many right now with the schools intact. When you talk about hospitals, we have three hospitals. We think all three of them will survive. They will not be capable of doing anything but basic first aid for at least the first 72 hours, because it's going to take that long to get them cleaned up, get the glass pushed out of the way, get them washed down to have, you know, a clean area where people can work. As far as our nursing homes, we have 20,000 residents, over 70 in Clallum County. They will not be able to be evacuated. In weather conditions like we have right now, if the power goes off, they don't have lights, they don't have warm food, they don't have hot water to get their hygiene needs taken care of, and, you know, they have no HVAC to keep them warm. This is a big, big concern for us in the county and the efforts that we're trying to make right now. As far as the electrical grid is concerned, we've been told that we, it may take up to a year for 90% of today's electrical demand to be met. And that means that the paper plant, which will be destroyed by the tsunami, and the yacht plant, Westport Marine, which will also be destroyed by the tsunami, and the sawmills that are still working will not be able to work. This will make an abonomic drag on the county's ability to recover that will be quite significant. As far as our water and sanitary sewer systems, most of the water and sanitary sewer systems require electricity to work. We figure that about 67% of it might be able to be repaired as soon as we can get power back to the water systems. 33% would have to be rebuilt. 44% of our systems in the sewer systems would maybe come back when the power's restored. Airports, we have two airports that we think will survive. One is at Port Angeles and one is out near Forks. What this all means when we lose our bridges and our culverts is that Clallum County gets broken into 20 isolated communities that we call micro islands. Each of these micro islands has to have a plan for how it's going to take care of the people that are there until the bridge that's between T and S can be required, and so on all the way across the county. Okay, this is a confusing slide, and I only show it because what this says is search-and-rescue, medical, water, security, distribution, these things are going to start flowing towards Clallum County and Western Washington as soon as the earthquake starts. And what you see here is that we're going to have a whole lot of different things, but not very many of them in the first week to two weeks. What it's going to take is it's going to take up to six weeks to repair the infrastructure enough to distribute products and food and water and medicine to get people back on track. This is a plan that we have for Port Angeles, around the airport, about where we're going to go ahead and set up our logistical facilities for when the Air Force starts to fly materials back into us. And that springs me to, that's what we think is going to happen in my county. So you need to ask yourself, what's going to happen in your district or your county? You know, will it be badly damaged and how bad? If you're in a rural area west of the Cascade Crest, your place is going to look a lot like mine. If you're in an urban area west of the Cascade Crest, you need to start asking some really serious questions. Is, will residences or facilities that are more than 10 stories above the ground in places like this be inhabitable? If you don't have an elevator, you don't have lights, you don't have water being pumped up to you, are you going to be able to have people that live in these condos and in these apartments continue to stay there? these apartments continue to stay there, or are they going to be put out on top of your sheltering requirements for the rest of your community? Will the residents be able to work if there's no power at the facility they work at? How are they going to get paid? And what happens if they don't? Does a landlord still collect rent if the rental's damaged? Does a business pay B and O tax if it's not operating? And that goes back to here about not having power. Now, people in Seattle and the eastern, you know, King County, this, the east side of Puget Sound will get power faster and some services faster than Clallam County will. But this is still going to be a drag on you. So what I would ask you to do is find out if there's a plan for your congressional district, and then think about the things we've talked about today, and come up with how you can best help your district as a member of the legislature. Thank you for your time, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, committee, for sticking around.
Good afternoon, Senator Honeyford, members of the committee. My name's Robert Azell. I'm the Director of the Washington Military Department Emergency Management Division. I've got my eye on the clock above your head, Senator. I can run through my slides in two minutes, or I can take about 10. What would you like? 10. Okay, I will speak very, very quickly. The committee asked the question, how does emergency management work nationwide? Answer's very easy. All disasters are local. They're handled and managed at the local level. All of us at the upper echelons of government, whether it be county, state, or federal, exist and support the local level in response. So resource requests flow up. They're sourced at the higher levels and then pushed down to the local jurisdictions who need them. That's how it works cross-country without fail. We've been taking a look at this catastrophic hazard that exists off of our coast. An awful lot of work has been done statewide. The eight counties around the Puget Sound region did a lot of work under the Regional Catastrophic Preparedness Grant Program. The statewide catastrophic incident planning team is working right now, and that's tribes, counties, cities, state agencies, all working together. The Washington Department of Transportation is doing a lifeline corridor initiative, strengthening roads up and down the Puget Sound area. The governor signed the Resilient Washington Subcabinet Executive Order, and then the National Guard has put an inordinate amount of work in developing a plan to open the air routes into the communities across Western Washington. I'm just going to tick through these slides really quickly to show you the level of work that's been done. There's a basing concept, and again, it's all how do we open the air routes to get logistics flowing to the people who need them. So to test those plans, we conducted Cascadia Rising back in June of last year. Approximately 20,000 people participated in it. It had a number of national or linkage to national level exercises. Those were our focus areas. We didn't want to try and take the whole gamut of preparedness, but taking a look at those core capabilities, and then we have the after-action report finalized and ready for release. I want to talk just really briefly about the strategic top-level observations we had, and probably the biggest overarching thing that came out of the exercise. It was something that we'd already seen, but it just hammered home that the system of ordering resources that we talked about earlier just isn't going to work. The needs are going to be so immediate, they're going to be so overwhelming, the response is going to be so overwhelmed, that we're not going to have time for the first responders who are in the middle of trying to dig people out of houses, get power back on generators into hospitals and police stations. It's not, they're not going to have time to just identify and then start asking up the chain for resources over communications network that's just not going to be there. So we have to take a fundamentally different approach to a catastrophic type of event, in that we need to turn that system entirely upside down and transition from a pull system of logistics to a push system of logistics. And what that means is all of us going, community by community, tribe by tribe, city by city, county by county, across Western Washington, identifying what the needs are going to be. So what is it you're going to need? Is it food, water, is it medical supplies? Is it communication stuff? What is it? And then build a plan to figure out how to get that stuff off of a largely compromised transportation infrastructure out to the communities that need it. And that is the planning effort that we need to engage in across Western Washington. It is all-inclusive. It's not state emergency management doing it. It's not state government doing it. It's all of us partnering together to figure out how to meet those immediate needs of the people. And then we've got to do it against a ticking clock. We've probably only got about three days before we're going to start seeing significant humanitarian pressures from the people who are without food, without water. Some people will have prepared, some won't. Those people who haven't prepared are going to need food and water very, very quickly. We've got to figure out how to do it, and if we can't show that we've got a response going, commodities flowing into communities, first responders there, people from outside the community showing up saying, hi, we're here to help, we're going to have some significant pressures here internally within Washington. I talked about detailed planning. It's not the top level, hey, we're going to just get this road open. It's got to be right down to, this needs to be on the first airplane coming into McCord Field. This needs to be on the first airplane coming into Everett Field. And then how are we going to get this off of the airplanes and out into the communities that need it? And it's really, truly a multi-year, very heavy lift to do that level of planning. The transportation infrastructure is absolutely key. If we don't have roads open, if we can't open airfields very, very quickly, we don't have a response. And so we've got a plan for how we keep, how we get that infrastructure open. We need communications. We've got to be able to talk to each other across the communities, across the disciplines to be able to mount that response. If we can't talk, the response again is going to be compromised. So we've got a plan for survivable public safety communications. Tremendous implications to public preparedness. Our state message going into the exercise was three days. We've shifted it since to people need to prepare for 14 days. And in some of the isolated communities, even 14 days may not be enough, as Jim has said. Finally, Cascadia is a national issue. The response is going to be national to international in scope, but we feel that preparedness also is a national issue because the resources of the state frankly are not up to the need in terms of what we need to do to get us ready. We do need federal help. Going forward, we looked at all of the different things that come out of it, what we need to be working on, and we kind of took at its core. The number one thing is ensuring the life safety and well-being of people. So it's the food, the water, the medical care. We think in the emergency management of the community in terms of emergency support functions. So that translates to emergency support function six, mask care and sheltering, eight, public health and medical. Those are the ones we need to focus our planning efforts on now in the short term. Also, the supporting emergency support functions, one, transportation, two, communications, and 12, energy. Not so much energy across the board, but fuel. We've got, if, after the ground stops shaking, the fuel on hand is going to be what's in the response vehicles and what you can access in the few undamaged tanks that might have a generator hooked up to them. So we've got to figure out how to get fuel to the response, but then also how to prioritize the critical restoration of power. And it's not necessarily the blanket, how are we going to get power up across Western Washington, but where are the key places that need it first. Then mitigation. It's not just response planning, but how can we invest dollars in making sure that the things that we're going to depend on, such as the roads, water, wastewater, power, are going to be there after the event, or even if they're compromised, how can we get them up quickly so that we can mount an effective response? And that takes investment in our infrastructure. Now, I realize that this year, one of the primary focuses is McClery and education, but at some point in the future, when the fiscal situation in the state changes, we would really strongly recommend taking a look at mitigation activities for how can we can make our state more resilient through targeted investments. And then finally, we don't wait for the event to start before we start planning for recovery. We need to do it now before the event so that communities can come together and take the steps that they need in order to be able to restore the economic vitality of their communities. So for planning, I talked about it. It's nested plans all the way up from the extreme local level, all the way up to the state and federal level, need to be built. We see that being a state-led planning effort. We realize, though, that resources at all levels of government are going to be extremely limited in order to do this. We need to pre-identify the resource needs and figure out how to get them into the communities. It's going to involve building a massive logistics database and logistics plan, how to get this stuff over, you know, what's going to be a very compromised infrastructure. We've got to take a look at ensuring the enabling capabilities of transportation, communication, and fuel. If we focus on the five ESFs that I started on, the transportation, energy, mask care, medical, and then, and communications, we look at the, with the minimum number of additional planners that I'm going to talk about in the next slide. It'll probably take us about three to four years to build very baseline capabilities for the, or plans for those five emergency support functions. Then there's another 10 that we're going to have to build out after that. So we're looking at about 10 to 12 years to build a baseline plan to cover all of the different areas that we need to, to start building that response for Cascadia. The committee asked us what would be required in terms of, in terms of planning to do that. Again, it is very, very basic. We are looking at two planners. The whole concept of planning is that you build a plan, you train it, you exercise it, then you go back and refine the plan based on the lessons learned in your exercising. So planning is not just something that you do, put it on a shelf, it's done. It's constant. It's iterative. So we look at two planners, two exercise planners to do that work. The National Guard are key partners in this, and so we would be looking for some state active duty, some goods and services. So total ask would be about 1.15 million per biennium. That concludes my questions, standing, or my comments. Standing by for questions.
Sobering, thank you very much. Is there any legislative legislation needed at this time?
Um, gosh, that's a good one. If I may, Mr. Chairman, just
You may.
One, one comment. I'm sorry that a good senator over here left because he asked a question about the sea level rising. Current estimates for a tsunami on the coast from the Division of Geology and Earth Resources, which Dave Norman is here, are 40 feet at Claylock within 15 minutes after the earthquake starts. You can expect that to travel up and down the entire coast of Western Washington. We think there will be enough buffering activity off of Vancouver Island to reduce that to maybe 30 feet coming down the strait. What gets through Admiral Yenlet and goes up and through the San Juans into Bellingham is completely unknown at this time. There is some simulation that says that possibly you will have a very high-tide event in the port of Seattle and the port of Tacoma. So legislation-wise, we have a plan called the Annex, and it's a baseline plan that has not been really publicized very much like the Oregon plan has, right?
We have, we have a catastrophic annex to the state's comprehensive emergency management plan, and that is kind of the big overarching plan that we have. And then what we're looking at doing for each of those emergency support functions is building an appendix to that catastrophic annex. And so we would look at 16 total appendices, of which the guard response plan would be one. And so that's the planning that's out there. We've also built a very similar guide to the Oregon playbook, which are the initial actions that we at state government would take within our emergency operations centers to respond if a Cascadia event took place. Legislation-wise, you might want to start to look at school seismic retrofit. That's, that is scary for us. You know, from my standpoint, as working with Clallam County Emergency Management, there's a few things mitigation-wise that we can do to maybe have less casualties from the earthquake and the tsunami. The thing that keeps me up at night is the number of people we're going to lose through exposure because we either don't have the shelters, we don't have enough food, or we don't have fuel or anything to keep them warm, keep them dry. Especially, you know, that may not be a big problem over in Senator Schessler's district, but at my place, it's, you know, if you get wet in the wintertime, you're in big trouble. So I think that's important. One of the things that Colonel Braun first introduced me, when he, when he came up, he says, and gave his program, he says, if you guys think the National Guard's going to show up with a bottle of water and a box lunch for you the day after this, you're going to get really hungry and thirsty. And I think that's true. One of the things that we have done in my community of choice is we are building a cache of supplies that will, is designed to feed up to 300 people for three weeks. And I think a piece, this has happened in a number of other communities around the British Columbia and Western Washington. Three of them have been pilfered. I would like to see a piece of legislation that specifically makes that a crime. And I'd hope that it's significant enough because there are, will be lives at risk if this material is lost. It's like pulling hen's teeth to get people to contribute to buy it. If somebody steals it, they need to go away for a long time. Senator, I'd like to take a stab at the, at the question. The Resilient Washington Subcabinet, one of the things that we see them doing as they grapple with this whole issue of resiliency is looking at areas where legislation could be recommended. And just for ideas, it could be things like building codes. It could be certain things like emergency powers. I wouldn't want to comment at this point saying, this is needed, that's needed. But I think that out of the Resilient Washington Subcabinet, you will see some concrete recommendations coming forward for legislation in the future.
Senator Schessler had a question.
Quick question. Thank you, gentlemen. Pretty interesting, pretty frightening. The Clallam Bay Correctional Center is really troubling that a corrections officer and their family would be put to that, or an inmate. Is the prison in the Greys Harbor area in a similar risk situation?
Yes, sir, it is.
Second question. Is there any list of priority transportation or other infrastructure that would be necessary within some of these regions to, if you're going to replace a bridge on the entire Olympic Peninsula, what would be the key bridges to replace a retrofit in transportation? Or if you get into central Puget Sound, is there a prioritization anywhere?
Yes, Senator. Right now, Department of Transportation is working on keeping one core or one lane of I-5 and 405 in combination from McCord Field all the way up to Payne Field open. So they're doing seismic retrofit above ground on all of the at-risk structures so that they can keep that critical transportation lane open. All new structures they're building to 1,000-year event standards. So they're anticipated to be there after a Cascadia-type of event. Beyond that, as we go through the Resilient Washington Subcabinet and work in, in particular on that ESF-1 plan, it's going to be, how can we open the roads, but then also to look at, where do we need to, where are going to be our highest leverage investments in years to come that we can keep those key lifeline routes open?
Thank you very much.
Senator Bailey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I didn't hear any comments about our military installations that we have in the state. Are they being involved in your, in your work, just from a standpoint of just knowing how you would interface with them for the help that we might be able to have from them?
Absolutely. They're being included in all of our work, Senator. Our, our planning efforts for the last three and a half years have been very inclusive of federal partners, particularly DOD, but others as well. And it's also been very inclusive all the way down, as we see here, to more local jurisdictions. So we've, we've got a pretty good gambit. Our bandwidth hasn't allowed us to engage everybody at this point, but we've engaged every facet of that. Specifically for the federal DOD installations, the, the common soundbite we get from them is, hey, look, when this thing happens, we're going to have our own problems. So if we have any extra capability, we will try to help you guys, but the bottom line is we got to take care of ourselves first. When you look at something like Bremerton or Banger, some of their potential problems are going to be on an order of magnitude larger than the rest of the state of Washington. So we really want them to focus on their problems. For areas like Fort Lewis or McCord, we may be able to get a little bit of surplus capability out into just the local jurisdictions, but those micro islands are going to restrict how far away from the installations they can be. how far away from the installations they can be. We are, however, planning in-depth for use of their rotary wing assets.
Senator Darnell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm thinking about a different kind of correctional facility in Gray's Harbor County. The juvenile facility is in the tsunami path. It's built on the river. It's also on the fault line. And that facility manager has told me that they're concerned that even a small quake would cause the locking mechanisms on the doors to bolt, or not bolt shut, but to be unopenable and that children could in fact die in that facility and that so could their, their caretakers. Do you need, do you wish for, do you know if there is any kind of compulsory messages that can be delivered to counties that this is unacceptable in today's environment where we have more scientific evidence that such a building would never be permitted today to be built there and should be closed and replaced with the facility on higher ground?
I think that's, yeah, I think that's really part of a larger challenge. And not to make light of what you're saying, but it's, we have structures all across Western Washington that are seismically at risk, from private buildings to public buildings. And it gets back to building codes and do we as a state, but then also realizing that we are a home rule state, do we communities change building codes, require seismic retrofit of older buildings that might be seismically at risk? And so I think that that is something that we as a state, we as a community, need to come to grips with. What are, what are we going to do with these older buildings that put people at risk? And so very valid point, Senator.
And Senator, I can't answer that problem in great detail, but I can tell you that Department of Corrections has been a planning partner with us, and they take this whole thing very, very seriously. So I'm certain that they're, they're looking at those issues too.
This would be county courts and county commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the panel and for your great presentation. Freaking me out. So my question is, is there anything in appropriating the money that we, you know, presumably were, or hypothetically will come up with, or anything else that we should not do in terms of directing you? Should we give you the maximum flexibility for planning? I mean, one thing I, you know, I guess I'm always concerned about is if we somehow try to micromanage something from here that we don't know as, as much about as we, as our, as our experts. And I want to make sure we don't do something to screw up what you need to have to do your jobs. How's that for a negative question?
You can come to work with us.
And I'm not talking about anybody in particular, but, you know, things happen sometimes, so.
Senator, I think that the more detailed or the more micromanaged that you would provide guidance, perhaps the more difficult it would be and more, the more likely it would be that an effort would go sideways. But I'm also sensitive to the fact that open checkbooks can be negatively perceived. And so, you know, if money is allocated, I would expect that performance metrics be established and that we be required to demonstrate the performance toward the, toward the goals for which the money is appropriated.
Senator Tiger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the development of the scenarios that you've been using, how long would you envision that it would be before the legislature would have to come back into a special session to, to pass a supplemental budget to give you the resources you need? I mean, obviously, you'd want resources as soon as possible, but.
After the event?
They, after the event. And realistically, how long would it take for the, given the road system and things to actually get together where we could have a quorum?
Well, I think you'd probably have to, I think, you know, we've talked about this amongst ourselves. I think you'd probably have to move the seat of government to Spokane for an indefinite amount of time until you could be sure that you had enough power and materials and stuff like that to be able to survive here. I mean, you should have been here, Senator, on February, in February in 2001 because it was an amazing effort that our staff went through to get the O'Brien Building put together so that we could have, just have house action over there. And we weren't able to get it back into the Capitol and a lot of other buildings. So, you know, you can talk to some of your colleagues that were here when that happened, and they'll fill you on some really hair-raising stories. But I, I seriously doubt if you would be able to continue government from these facilities for quite a while.
But again, you're driving to the heart of a very important issue. And it's not just for state government, but it, it goes all the way down to every level of government, and that is continuity of government. How do we plan to ensure the continuity of government within Washington State, within the counties, within each community so that elected officials can perform their, their responsibilities? And so that's something that we really must do. Just like state agencies and businesses, everybody does continuity of operations planning. So what are we going to do so that we can perform our essential functions in the aftermath of a disaster like this? And crucial that we, that we do that planning going forward.
Representative Buck, you want to ruin Spokane too, huh?
Yes. Economic development opportunity, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just thinking, it sounds like each caucus